At Council of Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology because saving you time saves you money.
At Council of Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council of Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
Anything on the consent agenda? Do you have my proclamation? Perfect. Anything on ordinances for first reading? Anything?
Oh, wait.
Please come up with something.
For first reading, yeah, so we're not going to be done that quick. On D, 4D, 5D, I didn't see what changed.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. There should have been a redlined version, but you have two pink ones here. It's in, under stadium type activities that used to, where it has 200-foot separation, now it used to be 300-foot. And the big change, though, is that even with the 200-foot, if there's residential uses, it used to be within that 200-foot buffer or 300-foot buffer, you could not, you're not allowed to be, have the activity that close. This is allowing the 200-foot buffer, if and if there's residential uses within that buffer, people, those people owning or renting those units would have to essentially authorize the proposed use or be supportive of it. And so it puts a burden on the person seeking the expanded liquor license to actually go out and have them sign a petition in support of this project.
So the actual volleyball, it's volleyball courts, right?
Yes.
So the volleyball courts are closer, that's what's closest, closer to the residence?
That could be within 200 feet, yes.
And so then, then the permission, do they, do they do that by a letter and then they report back to the city?
What I've written in here is that he has to submit a petition to the city when he makes his application to, for that outdoor area.
Designating that he has X percentage of okays?
Just a showing that all, all the residential uses have authorized his proposed use.
Okay. And then do we know what other, what other places are, I mean, this, this is actually, you know, as a result of one, one company's request, so are there other bars and taverns that, that would be affected by this, potentially?
Potentially, yes. The, what had happened with this section, it had stayed the same since the inception of the outdoor drinking, any outdoor drinking. This was, this stadium type activity was actually intended to accommodate the dog track.
The dog track?
That's crazy.
When it came down. And so, in looking at what we've done with all the other outdoor drinking requirements, these were much more stringent than, say, just the open air tavern that would currently allow it, just about any, well, yeah, any bar could have 150 square foot outside. So I just, I did loosen it up. I could have kept it 300, but I thought 200 seemed to be adequate. That's normally what we require when we go out to get notice people when we're seeking a rezoning or something like that. And so it just seemed to be more consistent to go with the 200.
So for the individual that this came up, he just needs to bring into you or to Mercy?
He, when he submits his application.
Mercy.
For the expanded area.
Did he bring it in? Okay, he already brought it? Yes, he didn't bring it yet? When he submits, sorry.
Yeah, who would be talking next meeting?
Is when he can bring it, okay.
Assuming the council is willing to move forward on this and waive their...
And then they bring it, and they have to do something different than with our liquor license too, right?
Just enlarge the liquor license premises to include this additional area.
Okay.
Also, we do, did change or add an additional requirement for these areas, and that is that they be closed within, by 10 o'clock at night.
And the access is controlled still, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Kind of in that same vein while they're, while we're there, what's Hooters doing, you know?
They're doing essentially the same thing that Quaker State and Lou. They're a PC zone, and that's where our, really our most liberal laws are regarding outdoor consumption, because there is generally no residential use close to those areas. And those are the loosest regulations we have for...
Is it once a week? Is it every night?
They're having it one, one, two, they're having it Tuesday nights, because Wednesday and Thursday are already at Quaker State, so they're taking over Tuesdays.
And then there was, which I don't know that there is anymore, but controlled access requirement for Quaker State in this same...
They, they put together a list of conditions that essentially modeled the Quaker State conditions, and they, they seemed on board with that. It requires all entrances to be staffed when that's being utilized, and so, yeah, they'll have the same requirements as Quaker State.
So even though the drawing and all that isn't in our packet, the applicable city departments have seen it and reviewed it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Rose has confirmed that there's adequate parking, even with them taking up some of the parking for the display.
The display?
Well, the motorcycles.
I was wondering, like, what's display?
We've got to be careful about that.
The motor vehicle display.
All right. Anything else?
Yeah, I have a number of questions about parking meters and passport parking, if I may?
You may.
The initiative for passport parking was, was announced, I think, back in August of, of 2013. And when did the modifications on, on the meters start to take place to upgrade them to these digital meters?
Well, we started years ago, actually. We'd just been budgeting, you know, so much per year and then gradually been replacing them.
So it was before the, the agreement with Passport was in place?
Yeah, citywide, yes.
Okay. And do you know approximately how much it costs to upgrade each meter?
Well, I think the meters were replaced with digital. The old ones were mechanical and they couldn't be adjusted. I don't recall the, I don't recall the price, to be honest.
Okay.
I'm assuming a couple hundred, 300 a meter or something like that.
You didn't start upgrading them because Passport didn't require an upgrade, is that correct?
No.
Okay.
The mechanical ones were just becoming obsolete and harder to get parts. You couldn't adjust them.
And you can still use Passport on those, it's just that you were replacing them because they were...
Passport and the digital meters really don't have anything to do with one another.
Okay, I just want to understand.
Yeah, Passport should say pass-through payment method, correct?
Yeah, it really has nothing to do with the meter equipment itself.
Okay. So at, you were, I guess, estimating $200 to $300 per, per meter. I might ask you if you could get a more specific number for me at some point, but, so at that amount, how long would it take to, for a typical meter on, say, West Broadway to pay for itself?
Yeah, I don't know if there is a payback on...
Yeah, I was going to say never.
Okay.
I, I didn't amortize it.
Isn't it more to prevent people from, like, parking there all the time?
Yeah, the intent of the meters, and we get, you know, we've gotten suggestions from the businesses downtown, let's do away with the meters, and we, we could do that. I don't, and when I say they never pay for themselves, we have to pay for employees to go around and make sure they work. We have to have court costs and time associated with it. The intent of the meters is to turn over the parking places, and, and if you're, just use Barley's as an example, if you're Barley's and you have 10 to 15 employees, your employees are the first ones to arrive, they take the 10 or 15 closest parking places to the, to your business, and your customers can't park there, and so...
Or in the 100 block in particular, or tenants. But, you know, we have, you can tell downtown, there's, there's employee parking just on the fringes of downtown where there are no meters, and, you know, I, you know, those folks would stop parking beyond the meters, and they would park as close as they could to their businesses. So it's, it's, all has to do with turnover and, and making sure that everybody has an opportunity to a spot.
In addition to the meter people, there's someone that goes around and empties them too, so...
Yep. No, that, yeah, definitely there are personnel costs. So the Non-Forel article back in 2013 noted that the agreement with Passport called for like a $500 a month or $6,000 a year. And it also noted that there is a 25 cent charge for, for using the Passport service. Where does that 25 cents go to? Does it go to the city or does it go directly to Passport?
I thought it went to Passport, but it's just been too long since I've dealt with that, I don't recall.
It's my memory as well.
It's my memory, the 25 cent went to that.
I think that was the cost of doing...
I was wondering about that because I was looking over the vendor payment list for March of this year, and I, I noted a payment to Passport in the amount of $3,476 for, for something called Passport fees. So I'm wondering what that additional payment represents beyond the $500.
Well, it's possible the city collects the 25 percent, or 25 cents, and then has to reimburse that company. I mean, I, I guess I was not prepared to talk about Passport, so I'll have to refresh my memory in a little while.
Yeah. My Addie?
I know what that was. It was for three months' worth of charges. I don't know why they didn't melt promptly or wipe them away, but we...
Can you come to the microphone so the people at home can hear you? Thank you. Patty Hendricks, I'm the editor. I know that we paid them for three months' worth of fees. They apparently billed us late, and we paid them roughly $1,000 a month.
It's up to $1,000 a month now?
That's generally approximately the fee that we do pay to them.
Okay. I would appreciate getting some more clarification on, on the fees to Passport. I'm just trying to figure out if this is a, a good arrangement and if this has anything to do, or how much correlation this has to raising the, the meter rates.
Well, we didn't, the meter rates were raised a long time ago.
How long ago?
Well, several years ago. And that's, that's what we're proposing now, is to eliminate the old mechanical meter rates.
Okay. I guess I'm trying to understand how meter rates were raised when the city code says that the fees for the meters will be set by the city council, and the city council last acted on meter rates in 2003.
I don't think they've been increased since then, but at that time, that's probably when we started eliminating the mechanical meters and replacing them with the digital meters. And when, when they were replaced, then they were set up at the, the proposed rate, 75 cents.
Okay. Well, how were the rates come up with then if they were in excess of that, which was provided for by city ordinance?
I would assume politically. I mean, I can't imagine we recommended 75 cents an hour. I mean, that's pretty cheap, but I assume that's what the council set it at.
Well, I guess I'm confused with what's...
It's in the ordinance. It's, that's the ordinance, it's 75 cents.
So when we're looking at this, the changes are the things that were in red that were lined through. That's what you're changing?
Yes. Which is eliminating, first of all, eliminating a lot of lots that we don't even own anymore. And, and those were all the lots that still had the mechanical meters that were slowly being phased out.
Okay.
We're not actually raising it, we're just, we're just getting rid of the outdated data, right? That's the way, that's the way I read it because...
We're dropping the ones that no longer exist, is that what?
Well, the exceptions were like the Vine Street Lot. Well, the Vine Street Lot still had the old meters that couldn't be adjusted, so they had to be left at 40 cents an hour until they were replaced.
Just because they didn't have the capacity to...
Right, you couldn't, you couldn't adjust them.
Well, when were those replaced?
Well, they were replaced...
Probably when the parking lot was upgraded.
Probably. If not slightly before that, you know. Again, we had, we only did so many a year, and we kind of did them lots at a time.
Okay.
The bottom line is, though, we're not raising the fees, the fees were still on the books. This is my interpretation because that's all written in black. So the red, the red stuff is, is the, the things that aren't in place anymore that we're just, you just need to get it out. You're cleaning up the, the ordinance essentially.
Yes.
Okay.
We're eliminating the exceptions that existed because we couldn't adjust the meters to the new rates.
Right.
Okay. But since these are digitally set, these, these new meters, they could have been programmed for that lower amount, could they not?
Yeah. Except we established the rate at 75 cents.
Okay.
I mean, you're right, we should have, every time we replaced a meter, we should have come back to the council and said, Vine Street Lot, accept these five meters that we replaced this year. We didn't do that.
Or before the changes were made to any of them, for, for that matter.
Right. I mean, we could have had the ordinance changed by meter, which is how we replaced them, and we didn't do that, so...
But we established, and I don't know, we established the digital rate back in 2003.
Correct. It's not written as that.
And at that time, it was understood you were changing out to the digital, so everything that was still mechanical would remain at this price until it was changed out?
I'm assuming it was understood. I mean, that was...
I don't know why you would have two different rates if that wasn't the understanding.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but, yeah, that was just, you were phasing out, finally it's all phased out, you know, it's done, and so the others going away, but...
That's, that's exactly how I took it as well. It's just that you're phasing out the old stuff, and, I mean, the rate is the rate. We've already determined that by ordinance, so...
But the point really, is it not, that whatever, whatever it is written to say should be what it is?
Which I think it is, right? I mean, that's what I'm understanding is it is.
Well, as we move forward, you know...
Well, and to, to the mayor's point, I just want to spend a little bit more time exploring whether or not we're doing something that's really in the best interest of not only the, the city, but the small businesses around some of these locations. I can certainly understand that around some of our public facilities, that you're going to need to control amounts of time that individuals are parked in, in spots. That makes a lot of sense, but I'm wondering, given, given the costs that the city's incurring here, just in personnel costs alone, I guess I wanted to ask you too, how much do you estimate that Public Works is expending on, on meter maintenance per year? I couldn't find a line item for that in, in the budget book.
Well, I think in general, meter revenues offset our meter department costs, including personnel. So it's, it's somewhat of a wash, I think, in general. That probably doesn't include enforcement, but the meter...
If they go to court.
Pardon?
If they go to court, it doesn't include that.
Well, or the enforcement of people writing the tickets.
Well, I was just, I'm asking that because at $200 to $300 per, per meter, plus...
Well, Matt checked, it's $150 for a digital meter, plus labor to install it.
Okay, plus labor, and, and the personnel costs. You have three manpower positions essentially, two for enforcement, one for maintenance. That's $118,000.
Yeah, I don't think they're too full-time.
They're part-time, I understand, but, but the total personnel cost adds up to about $118,000. That's just salary, plus the, the maintenance cost, so by, by the time you factor in the, the cost of acquisition, maintenance, and personnel, any financial benefit to the city is pretty much wiped out.
I don't, I don't think there's financial benefit to anything the city does. I don't, I'm not, I'm not standing here claiming parking is set up to create a profit. That's not why we have parking meters in any means. It's done for the sole purpose of what Matt said, is to try and create turnover. I can, I can tell you that one of the most controversial things that I have to deal with is parking downtown.
Yeah.
No matter what I do or what you guys do, half are going to be upset and half are going to be, and no matter what condition that you establish at this location, people are going to feel that their situation dictates the same.
Understand. And I hope you understand why I'm asking so many questions about this, because, you know, this, this council and the city in general has spoken quite a bit about wanting to encourage additional development downtown. And so I'm, I'm really interested in seeing if, if this is a, a positive thing or possibly a detriment to development downtown.
I just can, Scott Belt always says we don't have a crystal ball. In this case, I think I do, and you're, you're going to open up the Sawyer Building with 34 apartments, and in, in some cases, there'll be one car and they'll have a specified parking place. In other cases, there'll be two people living in the apartment, they'll have two cars, and if you don't have a meter downtown, those people are going to park all weekend on the street and take up the street, in addition to employees, and so...
And they're going to have to pay for parking, so that's, they have to pay a separate fee for a parking space. And that was one of the discussions is, is that they're going to park over there if the parking is free, because, and they're just not going to buy a parking space. And I'm all about, I've had, get a lot of requests, do away with those meters, and here's the thing, if we do that, there's going to be some businesses that are going to be very upset, and like all those contractors working on the Sawyer Building, I guarantee they'd be parking back there, so I don't know how you make everybody happy, but I'm not opposed to it. I've told Greg before, you know, when we were doing the new lot, don't put the meters in, see what happens, but I don't think it's going to turn out well.
And I just mentioned, you know, we, we could try that in a location, hooding them for a month or two and see what it does, because I would imagine some places, well, I think, I think that's, was something that you had said else, some places it makes sense, maybe some places it doesn't. And that's, that's probably true, but...
Well, I know, you know, there's a lot of lease spots down there.
Yeah, that's true.
And I can tell you that they'll definitely, then we won't need to charge them, but there are people that don't want to pay the lease price or the daily rate, so they park elsewhere. I, I think there's going to be less parking, and we've just finally established more parking.
If the council permits, in my previous position at Fort Dodge, one of the things I was in charge of was parking. I'm glad Greg has it here, but one of the things that we did is we had to completely revamp the system, because there were no parking meters downtown, and it's exactly what you talked about. They took them out in the 70s because they thought business would come back down, and what you actually had was employees parking in front of their neighbor business, and then the neighbors would be upset about that, or they'd go out and chalk the tires because there's a time limit, but you'd watch them walk out after they went around the corner and wipe the chalk off. So it destroyed that turnover that Matt talked about. When we reinstalled the meters, it was a small section of downtown, we were able to, because of the revenue that was generated, we were able to start using that revenue to, to sustain the system that was going down $10,000 a year and use it to build, to rebuild a parking lot that hadn't been renovated in over 50 years. So that is very valuable. It's important to the system, it's important to keep things moving downtown. You're exactly right, those concentric rings of, you know, if you want to park for free, you have to walk a little further. Having that turnover in front of those businesses, that's what keep those businesses alive. So I would not encourage anyone to get rid of them. I know I'm going to get some hate mail for it, but I strongly believe in the system the way it's set up right now.
I know that some communities, I think maybe Davenport and Bucow, they took theirs, I know Davenport did, they took theirs out, but it was because the city built two parking garages. But they have like two-hour parking, but we had, then the city has to pay somebody from no funds to go and mark tires, which evidently they're just going to wipe off.
You run into serious problems with that, because then with meters, you have a definite time when it's plugged and one it's not. And with the, the electronic meters, digital meters, it's much easier. When you chalk a tire, it's too easy, you move the car two inches, you wipe the chalk off, it creates a, a large mess. Makes our, our part of the job much more complicated.
Have we, we used to, I think, and I'm not sure we still do, charge less, to use your words, less, if you're in a, you know, a farther out concentric circle. Do we still do that incentive? Do we charge more for places where we want turnover to be?
It's, it's in the ordinance here, it's 10-hour meters or 25 cents an hour, one to two hours is 50, and that's based on demand.
But based on those areas, I think some of those were set up when Midland's Mall was still around, so I, I'm not sure if they...
We've, we've kind of moved those around as demand dictates, and...
I guess that's my question.
We try and balance it too. We try and, you know, get a kind of a mix, but generally speaking, the, the short-term ones are in front of high turnover.
Because I, I, I would see, certain areas probably don't need them at all, certain areas should be cheaper because you're farther out, there's less need for turnover. If you're in the core of the downtown, that should be the, the main rate, yes, but when you're a couple blocks off, you know, should it be less? Probably.
I think that's what basically happens, because the eight-hour meters are over here on First Street by Bayless Hall, they're, they're over this way, and so they're, they are not the height.
The prime location, right.
Sure, and that makes sense, if somebody wants to walk a little bit more than they should.
If they were meters from the Castro McGivern, I would have never had a parking place, because there's an apartment next door with no parking.
Yeah, that's, I mean, even down here, yeah, there's still, on top of a lot of these businesses, there's apartments that, I'm sure if people didn't have to pay one of the meters, you would just park right there.
Well, the only complaint that I remember getting is the time, that there's been business owners that wanted longer, longer time for their customers, and we've already had that debate previously. I don't know if you guys run the council.
We had a coffee shop that...
Coffee shop downtown, yeah, that, that wanted...
One of the things we'll have to explore, particularly in, in the, in the Playland, former Playland Park area and the downtown core as it continues to come even more back to life, is what other cities have to do with the, the residential parking sticker, some sort of system that, you know, if you're going to use, if you're going, as a resident, if you're going to use an area, you have to, you have to pay for that privilege, and there's certain area, certain spots right in front of the business you can't use. As much as I don't like regulation, at some point, the more we have people down there and they're using spots, that will help, and cities slightly larger than us, and I think we're getting to that point at some point, maybe not yet, that will help determine they'll, they'll pay their costs so that they're contributing to the cost of the parking, but it'll also limit where they can park. Because right now, you could just park every, I, I appreciate somebody living in an apartment isn't going to go out and park right in front and plug the meter every two hours when they're home, you know, during the day if you're off a day or something, but at some point, those farther out meters, you know, that, that would also be a source of revenue that would be tied directly to use. You know, if it's a farther out one, if I'm a resident, I might get a, I would think I'd get a slight break on that, but it would also, it'd also encourage me to park in those zones and not in front. And the more we add, I think, adds complexity, but we're adding complexity with more people, and maybe, maybe we ought to look at that before it becomes a problem, a good problem, because we have more people in the area. It's usually a residential type sticker.
I mean, any residential that goes in down there will have to have so many spots for how many, you know, units, so...
That's true, but sometimes people want more, and if they do, then they can pay for it, and then, then they're directly helping pay for the system as they use it. And it also marks them out so that if, you know, if they're, if they're trying to park all day long in a spot that isn't a residential spot, it'll right away show that, you know, it'll be easier to tick it.
You're talking about in metered locations?
You can do it that way, yeah. I've seen it both ways, and I'm certainly not an expert on it, but different places I've lived do it, I've seen it both ways. Most of the time, it's non-meter locations, and the curb will just be a different color, but you, there are several different ways to do it. And I think as we add more people, we'll have to find a way to accommodate that, plus it seems to me that the more you use something, the more you should pay for it instead of the general taxpayer. I, it's something that we ought to maybe look at as we add more people. Otherwise, because you can only build so many parking lots, particularly in an urban core, you, you need the building space. You don't want to, you can't have suburban parking lots in the downtown, and we've traditionally done that, but as we add more people to the area, we can't have half the downtown be a parking lot like it's a suburban mall, where it won't really be a downtown, and that's not really the... And that's not really the highest and best use of that ground, so it's just something to look at.
Have we installed the last of the digitals?
I'm pretty sure we're, we're done.
Is the language match or we, did we get that taken care of, you know? There were like three different versions of the language on those meters that accept Sundays and holidays, um, Saturdays and the following ho- Saturday, Sunday and the following holidays and...
Hey, I'm not sure where we are on that. I mean, there, we've never had, we've never charged after five or on weekends.
No, but we had an issue on Martin Luther King Day.
Uh-huh.
It said except Sundays and holidays and so people weren't feeding the meters but were getting tickets. And some meters say which holidays, I think, and some just say holidays and...
Maybe we ought to just match whatever the federal and state holidays are to keep it simple.
Well, yeah, but it's, it's the holidays that we're not working...
Frankly, otherwise, listing them all, there's just only so much room on there, nobody's going to read that and I, that's too much to read.
It's going to be like 13 or 14?
If it's a federal or state holiday, that...
Well, thank you for, for your feedback. I'll probably be getting back with you by email over the next couple of weeks with some follow-on questions.
Well, I, it sounds like you'd like to see more information on the Passport costs, but...
Yeah, I just want to see i- if this makes financial sense for, for, for the public and, and if, if we're doing the right thing, not only by the, the people paying the fees but also the businesses and, so I'm just interested in some of the administration and cost factors.
Is there a way to analyze the amount of revenue we received pre-Passport versus post-Passport and one of the, in the, uh, I know with Omaha, if you use your credit card, it has increased the minimum amount, so I can put a quarter in and get times, but if I use my credit card, I only can get an hour and so that helps, and I don't know, Passport works that way or not.
Yeah, I, I didn't...
But it artificially inflates the amount of revenue you get to make up for the fees because you can't get a...
But if the, if the meter posts the time, then the next person that's in that spot gets the benefit though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, if there's enough time on there.
It works that way with, the traditional way too.
Well, right, if you, if you put in 50 cents in for an hour and it takes you five minutes, then the next person benefits, yeah, yeah.
It's a minor lottery, yeah.
I would assume that since these are digital, that there's data download capabilities from, from each of these meters that...
Yeah, we, we know the usage.
Yeah. So, and that would, that would include usage from, by coin versus by, by Passport. So I guess that, that would be useful data to, to have at our fingertips too, to look at these meters, uh, by, by area and see which of them are, are really being used and are making a difference versus those that are only sparsely used during business hours.
And we have done that in the past, taken, uh, low-use meters and converted them to 10-hour, just thinking perhaps that that might generate more usage.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Reader.
Other questions on the ordinances? Anything on the permits and cancellations?
Tim, have you been in touch with, I, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Mr. Hoover owns, um, rodeo, not just hounds, but I could be mistaken.
Oh, you're right.
Is that right?
Yes.
Has he, has he been in touch with you regarding some of the potential concerns?
The three issues that happened at the rodeo that were passed on aren't as big a concern as the continually issues that we're facing next door, so...
Yeah, I, comparatively, yes. I just, I didn't know if any of that bled over or if...
It's kind of a strong word to use.
No pun intended, honestly, there, but yeah, as I said it, yeah.
No, we're still working through the enforcement process and making sure that they are paying attention to the rules and trying to meet with them. Last time we went to get video from them, disappointing their DVR went down.
Yeah.
I'm not sure when it's going to be fixed, so we're not able to get video now.
It, um, it does seem to come in, in spurts. It's certainly been less, it, from what I can personally see, and it's just what I see, so I, I'm sure I don't see everything, um, but it does still seem to be a bit of a problem at times.
Rodeo or hounds?
To be honest, it's hard to tell the difference from my vantage point, literally from my vantage point.
From the reports I'm looking at and the people I'm talking to, I think most of it's at hounds.
Okay.
Uh, some of the spillovers on the sidewalk out front, we're trying to deal with that as well.
Yeah.
But it's a public sidewalk, they argue that it's not their responsibility even though they're waiting to go inside their establishment.
Yeah.
And I don't know what the status of the change in the Iowa law is. It passed the House 98 to nothing.
Yeah.
So literally, we have no authority to do anything to them anymore.
Yes and no. In looking at the, in looking at the new code, it's, it's, if you call 911 and request assistance, they're not necessarily making those calls, we're approaching them, so we'll be able to work through some of those things. We're dealing with the issues directly still. In other words, we had two incidents where we were doing, uh, compliance checks and they sold the minors, so we issued citations for that, trying to work with the city attorney and make sure they're accountable for that. There was a previous one that we brought back, another service, uh, we're working on an over-service case in there, so we're trying to make sure they know we're paying attention.
Can't ticket them as a nuisance for multiple calls for service.
No, not just for, just for calls alone. We have to justify exactly what happened and make sure that it wasn't a request on their part for assistance. Hopefully it'll continue, we'll hold it down and make sure it stays in compliance and we'll continue to build the case if it's not and bring it back to you for, too, because at some point, we're going to have to make a decision.
Yeah.
How long are we going to let it go?
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You bet.
With the change, if, if this did pass, and I think it's going to, does that mean then that no matter, I mean, there's not going to be a lot that we can do or the police can do about those type of things going on down there? Even if they have repeated episodes of serving minors, it's still up to the state to take their liquor license away and you're not going to be able to... Sorry, I waited till you sat down.
You can ticket them.
We're going to continue to use the available ordinances and state statutes to make sure they know that we're paying close attention, including arresting, uh, customers when it's appropriate or staff. You're right, some of that's going to be difficult, we're trying to maintain that relationship with them to get them to, to comply and, and control their customers more. And we keep getting reassurances that they're trying to work on it, but it's not necessarily always proving true. So yes, it, it's a delicate balance and we're trying to work through it.
But I, I believe if it's calls for assistance to the police department that is the basis of your recommending denial of the liquor license, you can't do that.
Correct. But if they find a violation when they get there...
Yeah, yeah.
If they call us, then we can't use that as part of denying their permit. If, if it's calls where it's a violation of law, like they've oversold, um, they sold the minors or there are other violations like that, then yes, I believe we can use those...
Yeah.
... to go after the license. And that's what it's going to take. Um, and, and remember, each time something like that happens, if I understand it correctly, there's a criminal aspect to it for that employee that sells, but then the business also has to suffer, uh, the consequences with ABD, you know, whether they go through the, uh, the online training the first time or the fines start to build and there comes a subsequent, you know, charges or, or findings, I guess, that they will lose the ability to sell for so many days in the process too. So they need to pay attention because ultimately, it's going to get into their pocketbook. I didn't mean to walk away, any other questions?
No. That was...
Okay.
Delayed in my thoughts.
Wish I could tell you, it's all on there. It's still...
Anything else? All right, I think we have executive session.
Motion to go into closed session.
This is appropriate topic for you.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you get personalized customer service like nowhere else, like our travel club.
Come see us, bank with us and travel with us. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
The Mid-America Center is the Heartland's premier entertainment and convention center. April 25th, the Omaha Roller Girls take on the North Star Roller Girls in roller derby